We're ready.
Hey, welcome everybody to the regular meeting of Palotes City Council. Tonight it's 23rd of October 2025 and starting time is 7 o'clock PM sharp. If I could have everybody please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us all together once again to serve our community. Please give us the wisdom to make some good decisions tonight and to give us the strength to always give our best effort for the residents of Palotes. In your name we pray and rejoice. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one and indivisible.
Alright. So, welcome everybody. We're gonna go ahead and start to work down the agenda. So, the first thing we would like to do is provide a proclamation to our municipal courts. Municipal Court Week is coming up in the next week. And so, the mayor had issued a proclamation. And so, Ms. Del Toro, if you could please come forward, I will present it. Do I need a mic or?
Stand by.
We can hear you.
I didn't say that.
Okay, so, from the office of the mayor of Palotes, Texas, proclamation, celebrating Municipal Court Week, November 3 through 7, 2025. Whereas the city of Palotes Municipal Court, one of 953 municipal courts in Texas, was established on May 27, 1982 and serves as the local justice center for the enforcement of local ordinances and fine only state offenses that protect the peace and dignity of our community. Whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality life in Texas. And whereas more people encounter municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined, and public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public experience in municipal courts. And whereas the procedures for the Palotes Municipal Court operations are set forth in the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure and other laws of the state of Texas. And whereas the Palotes Municipal Court team, court administrator Shannon Del Toro and court personnel have pledged to be ever mindful of their impartiality, of rendering equal service to all, and continually striving to improve this administration of justice through participation in judicial education programs, seminars, and workshops. Now therefore, I, Rich Whitehead, which I am not, on behalf of the members of City Council and by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Palotes, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of November 3 through 7, 2025, as Municipal Court Week and recognize our municipal judges, court clerks, bailiffs, and other court support personnel for the exemplary services day for day. And anyways, I'm presenting this, signed by Rich Whitehead, Mayor, October 23, 2025. Thank you.
You weren't in the shot.
I will, I will say I got to spend some time with Shannon and her team. They're, they're all relatively new to the city of Palotes and they are just doing an amazing job. And when I read through that proclamation before actually presenting it, for me, it really does show all the important things that having a municipal court provides our community. So, again, I just wanna say thank you for what you're and your team are doing for the city of Palotes. So, let's see, what's next? Okay, so, we're going to, I'm gonna use my clock. I'm gonna say at 7:04, we're gonna open up a public hearing. And so, this is the second public hearing in relation to the company Killen, Griffin, and Fairmont. So, I'm gonna go ahead and I'm actually gonna read this because I just wanna make sure it's, it's very specific. The folks Killen, Griffin, and Fairmont will not be here tonight. And all, and also, the City Council will not be voting on this tonight. So, what's gonna happen is, since I opened up this public meeting, it's gonna stay open. It's gonna be staying open until the next City Council meeting, which we will then take action on it. And also, Killen, Griffin, and Fairmont will be present for that meeting. So, we still wanna hear your comments. And so, this is gonna stay open until I think our next City Council meeting is the 13th of November. So, anyways, I, I just wanna spell this out. So, the public hearing is to give all interested people the right to appear and be heard on request from Killen, Griffin, and Fairmont, P L L C, to amend the planned unit development PUD zoning ordinance by modifying permitted land uses in the commercial area, specifically parcel 2 of the Bandera Ranch, identified as BCAT property ID number 1434317. And specifically, to restate the two things they wanna add to the PUD ordinance, two things. Parcel 2, track A, they want to restrict the first-time use of the hard corner of Bandera and Scenic Loop Road to a full-service restaurant-type business. The full-service restaurant must be a single-tenant building with a minimum space of 4,000 square feet. So, that's the one thing that, the first thing they wanna add to that PUD ordinance. The second thing, they want to, parcel 2, track B, allow one restaurant with a drive-in, a drive-through to be a permitted use by right that shall run with the tract and, and not the tenant. Additional drive-through requests on the tract or anywhere else on parcel 2 shall require council approval, which is the normal process when somebody wants a drive-through. So, anyway, so, that's what the public hearing is about. This is the second public hearing. And like I said, we will not close this hearing tonight. It will stay open until the next council meeting. So, hopefully that makes sense. So, I, I have two people signed up. And so, I'll tell you what, I am going to, you got three minutes, state your name. Well, is it three minutes or can?
Three minutes.
Okay. I know citizens to be heard at three, so.
But if I give you a compliment, it might not start after the compliment.
Talk fast, ma'am. So anyways, I, so just state your name and your address. And it's Judith Hurst. And you're my neighbor, sort of, you're just.
Well, this might, this might resound with you then.
But go ahead and.
I'm gonna congratulate you first. I wanna congratulate you for Palotes making national and international news. You have made news in Germany, France, and Spain because of the Waholeti Ranch.
Yeah.
Yes. So, act in haste, repent in waste. All right, my time? Good. My argument is framed by the public safety issue. I live about an eighth of a mile from the intersection. That intersection has eight lanes coming together, converging, sorry, converging. You have Gray Forest coming in with a 20 mile an hour restricted traffic thing, but you've got traffic back up on there. You've got backup from 2T. You've got backup from Las Palapas when they open. You've got four lanes over here coming towards that intersection. If, now, I call Chick-fil-A because that restaurant serves April Tolby. Yesterday, 1,299 cars came through. And that's April, the manager. Marvelously Made School is close there. The parents are backing out, the parents are all over the place, the kids are all over the place. It's a little bit chaotic. And so, that is very close to the intersection. There were 3,333 crashes on Bandera, according to Techstat, during a four-year period. Of that four-year period, which was, I think, 2019 to 2023, we were responsible roughly in this area for 600. So, it made 100 a year intersection, not the intersection, but in that area. I couldn't get the intersection. You guys can do that. Also, lot of news about Palotes and the explosion and things happening. Historic Scenic Loop draw more congestion? Okay. Now, I have no sympathy for the owners. They bought the tract as is. And if they wanna change it, that's up to them. But I feel that at the time the City Council made the zoning decision, I can't find out why they zoned it that way before, but I would, I would urge a little bit of caution in changing it. Because if it's a public safety issue and something happens on that intersection and you've had the protests here, there's a little bit of liability there. I mean, not, is, that's the way it's gonna happen. So, we had a fatality recently, I think, on Bandera from 2/11 because 2/11 or 4/71 is closed, so the traffic is back-to-back. So, when I come to my intersection, I have six cars ahead of me. Scenic Loop has seven. We have a full house coming from Chaparral this way, and then we have four lanes this way. So, to me, now, I'm in a floodplain, as you know, A E N O. So, I don't know how close that floodplain is to that intersection.
So, ma'am, I, I, I didn't get you.
I'm sorry.
I, I need your, I need your name and your address.
Oh.
We can do that at the end, that's fine.
Judith Hurst, H U R S T, 14855, Antonio Drive.
Okay.
Palotes.
Of course.
Thank you.
Next up is Amy Barrell.
Yes.
I almost said that.
It's Italian for barrel maker. Hi y'all, I'm Amy Barrell, 10006 Lazy J Trail, 78023, right across the street. I didn't bring any notes or anything, but as y'all can probably imagine, I am here to oppose this PUD. I feel like it's a very bad idea. I don't like anything about the development, but I am resigned to the fact that it is going to happen and was zoned as such. And, you know, we've gone through this process for three years now. And I, Judith, I agree with you, there are safety concerns, you know, I, I get it, but Techstat is doing what they can to ameliorate that situation and we'll hope that nothing happens. My problems really specifically are with the two things that you mentioned. The drive-through and then the first-use restaurant on the hard corner. When you look at the site plan, it actually looks like there may be room for a second drive-through at some point. And then the hard corner, the language bothers me that it's a first-use situation because if they fail, if the business fails or they fail to attract a business, that it could become anything. I feel like the citizens of Palotes were given a bill of sale, which we kind of grudgingly accepted. We were told that we were going to get a boutique, like a nice little grocery store maybe, and a nice date night restaurant. Now, we're getting something very different. And I, I, I feel kind of gypped by the situation. We desperately need a little grocery store. That would be so great. I hate running to Walmart when I just need an onion, you know? That would be wonderful. And we do need a date night restaurant. We need to develop Palotes wisely. If you look at this developer, their, their development off of 151 where they did attract the Sprouts, the pad sites of joining it are terrible. It's like, let me think of these illustrious establishments. It's something like an AT&amp;T store, a Liquor Bueno, I think there's a vape shop, there's definitely a nail bar, there's a chicken salad chick, and there's a Dave's Hot Chicken. And let me tell you, we need no more chicken places because we're already called Palotes. So, let's not go that route. I can't imagine that anybody really who, who is concerned about the development of our town wants to see another drive-through go in there. We don't need that. We need more thoughtful development. Let's think about places where teens can go, maybe an arcade or something like that. Let's talk about maybe pottery, like, think about the towns that have this attraction, Fredericksburg, even Bernie, you know, Curville even. They have boutique, a boutique feel to them. And that's what we should be attracting. Now, I understand that the developers are positing this as, well, we're doing this for the convenience of the residents that we're trying to attract, et cetera, et cetera. But if we develop Palotes correctly, we don't have to worry about that. The residents will come because people like living in nice places. So, in short, I feel like Palotes has been gifted a Trojan horse. I can't imagine why P&amp;Z accepted it, but I implore y'all to not accept this gift. They really came in here under a totally different guise and, excuse me, but y'all were hired to represent us. We put y'all in this position. So, you don't work for the developer, you work for us. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Amy. So, there's nobody else signed up for the public hearing, so. Yeah, yes, ma'am. No, you can't, you can't have seconds. So, anyways, we're gonna keep this open, like I said early on, to the next council meeting, which is 13 November. So, with that, we're gonna move on to the next agenda item, which will be open session, I believe. Yes, it is. And so, this is the part for citizens to be heard. And I think I have two people signed up. They will be talking not about the PUD, they'll be talking about something completely different. So, I'm gonna go first, Kelsey Perks. So, again, you have three minutes, name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Perks. The address is 13010 FM 1560, Palotes, Texas, otherwise known as Spanglish Tax Army, if you guys live in the area. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Kelsey Perks and I'm here today to ask your consideration in allowing me to replace the deteriorating mobile home on my parents' property with a new, modern, and permanent manufactured home. The current structure is outdated, unsafe, and frankly, an eyesore. What I'm proposing is a major improvement, a brand-new HUD manufactured home that'll be placed on a permanent foundation, fully skirted, and finished with a front and a back deck. I'm working with a licensed professional housing company to make sure everything is done correctly to code and with the goal of enhancing the property's appearance and value. I understand the city's ordinance restricts manufactured homes, but under Texas Occupations Code 1,201.008, municipalities are required to allow a HUD manufactured home to replace an existing mobile home being used as a dwelling. The law specifically states that if the mobile home is replaced by a HUD code manufactured home, the city shall grant the permit for that use. This home will be permanent, not mobile, not temporary. It'll be built to stay. It meets every HUD standard for safety, energy efficiency, and quality. The distinction between manufacturer and modular, which I already have approval for, is largely technical. The houses look almost exactly the same and the construction standards are extremely high. However, the modular option would cost me about $50,000 more, which is something I can't afford as a single mother raising two kids. I want to note that an exception has already been made for another property in Palotes with similar, which shows that there's a precedent for this type of approval. I'm simply asking for the same fair consideration. Allowing this replacement would not only comply with state law, but it would improve the overall, overall look and condition of the property. It would not negatively impact surrounding appraisal values. In fact, replacing the structure with a new attractive, permanently installed home is an upgrade that benefits the property and the neighborhood. This home represents stability and safety for my children and me. I'm not asking for a special treatment, just the opportunity to improve my family's living situation in a way that's responsible, lawful, and beneficial to the community. I grew up on this property and I just want a safe and stable environment for my kids to do the same. And I really don't have another alternative. Thank you so much for your time, your understanding, and your willingness to consider my request.
Thank you, ma'am.
I also have some photographs of what the old nasty home looks like and what the new nice home is going to look like, so I'd like to submit those. Thank you.
No, thank you. Next up is Mahesh Vithathan. Was I close? No, okay. Your, your silence speaks volume. Alright.
So, it's like, my name is Mahesh Vishwanathan. Vish the King is like, so, I, I represent a group of Hindu dharmic organization called.
So, what's, what's the address?
My, my address, our address is 10506 Foxon Way, Palotes, Texas, 78023. So, we are part of Palotes City Diwali that we're celebrating in here, in Palotes Carnival Grounds. This is the second year that is happening. And this festival is the celebration of unity and diversity, where we bring the celebration of evil or good over evil. And it's gonna be a day-long event. It's a free carnival event. Last year, we had more than 6,000 people turn out to the event. Along with me, we have all our community leaders along from Seva International and Hindu Swam Sevak Sangh, Mr. Binayek, Mr. Shekara, Mr. Trinab, and our BMS leaders, along with other Indian Students Association president. And Kerala is another beautiful, God-given country, the president of that organization. So, it's gonna be a vibrant celebration of unity where we're going to have from the multiple, various food stalls and lot of historic representation with lot of traditional music with Bangra, for instance, and you could, and also, we're going to bring in the carnival feel, what we learned from the Palotes Carnival, Carnival, which has been going on for the last 60 years. And we're going to have the carnival feel, Alamo attractions are coming in. It's a free event, community event supported by the city of Palotes and the Carnival Grounds with David May. We highly appreciate and we are inviting the city council to join in this auspicious event, be our guest of honor in celebrating this beautiful event of unity with all of us together. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, I believe that's, that ends the open session, citizens to be heard. So, we're gonna move on to agenda item number five, which is a consent agenda item, which is basically just administrative stuff. In particular, it's to approve the last City Council meeting's minutes. So, does anybody want me to pull or discuss it in any detail? Okay. So, can I have a motion to approve consent agenda? Item number five is written. So, I got a motion by Councilmember Cato.
I'll second.
Second. A councilmember McGowan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes unanimously. And now, the last agenda item for tonight, it is not a, it's not anything for approval, it's direction and discussion about the, the actual master plan that the Palotes EDC has, has been working with, with a company.
Birding Amish.
Yes, there you go. And so, they had actually come to council for direction a couple months ago about the different phases that the, the master plan talks about. And we provided, council provided our direction to the EDC. And so, now, they've narrowed down that the number one, first priority, phase one will be the actual parking. And so, within the master plan, there's three options. Different sizes, different configurations, each one has pros and cons. And so, they're looking for, so the EDC Board of Directors have already discussed this. They're interested now in what council has to say about it. And I don't know, do we have a slide or something to actually show? So, councilmember McGowan and myself are also on the EDC board, so we're, we're pretty well-versed on this. We've already issued our opinion as, as Board of Directors. But we're, I think we're really interested in on what councilmember Buck Russell and Mr. Cato have to say. And I, I cannot see that very well, so Henry, I'm gonna turn this over, over to you if you don't mind.
Certainly, sir. I appreciate it. So, the, as you're looking at the image on your screen, you'll see option one with 65 spaces. You'll notice that the spaces on there, on the, as you're looking, the top side has a dotted line across those vertical parking spots. Those, that dotted line and those circles there indicate utility poles and lines that are there that would, the discussion point would end up being, do they stay or do they go underground, that kind of thing? I'll just say very plainly that, that adjustments of those lines would be an additional cost to consider. In addition to the 65 on that far left side, you'll see how deep it goes into the park. You'll also see in the middle one, option two's 51 spaces. Obviously, it doesn't take the same measure of, of, of impervious surface. And you'll see that that backside is, is clear where those lines are. And it does still project pretty deep into the, into the park. Last one is 49 spaces. Those 49 spaces, it actually, both the 51 and the 49 spaces give us still access to an existing access way that needs to either remain or be adjusted. So, this, between 49 and 51, do not require any adjustments to get to the, to the utilities that are back in that corner on the right top side that's not really visible in your, in your picture. From a professional staff perspective, I will say that I asked a question to both EDC as well as our, our Public Works, you know, what do we perceive as our maximum use and maximum need for parking? And I don't see a municipal reason to utilize the 65 spaces. I understand that it is, that is a great number to have, but in the overarching situation, can I or we produce like an Easter egg hunt or some other things that our coordinator puts together for us and do it on that land and maximize those spaces? There's not enough public safety, parking, and all the other things that we would actually do an event. I have here also our Director of Public Works, Corey Vulo, if you would make your way. And if, I know that you have some comments also, if, if we may.
Yes, sir. Thanks for the opportunity to speak on it. So, I actually today spoke with the Parks and Recreation Crew in reference to, you know, how, how often do you think it's at maximum use anyway? And that crew basically told me that it's not necessarily that they see that park at maximum use in terms of parking spaces, but that the design, the, the current design prohibits people from getting in and out and that there's ambiguity in where you're supposed to park and where you're not supposed to park. So, the way I, when I went out there recently and then even looking at imagery, it appears that we have about 40 spaces if everybody parks in a, in a, in a manner of courtesy for everybody else, right? So, even if we just went with the 49 or 51, there's, there's an improvement in available spaces. But more importantly, I think the design is what we should be looking at as far as maneuverability, getting in and out of there. And again, the Parks and Recreation Crew, they actually liked option three because they oftentimes, when they go in there and they service that park, have a trailer attached to their, to their truck. And it, option three gives them more clearance and more availability to turn around in there. And they also didn't like how options one and two encroached on the, on the golf course, for what that's worth. One thing that we do need to note for option three is it states that there's a 10-foot-wide entrance for the lift station that actually needs to be 16 feet per the actual dedicated easement on that deed. So, that, that's something we need to note as well. And for anyone who doesn't have familiarity with it, that top right corner of that parcel is where the actual entrance to that lift station is. So, just for some clarity there, if anybody is paying attention to that. So, just for some clarity there, if anybody is paying attention to that, that's where SAWs or whoever needs to be servicing that would, would enter from is that top right corner. That's where the current gate is, and that doesn't mean we don't, we can't move the gate, but just for some clarity there. Another thing to note is we didn't find anywhere where they, where they determine, where they explicitly state the, uh, the size of the parking spaces. I know we're not like at that stage yet, but we, we need some clarity on that, too. So, our, our ordinance does call for certain dimensions, so...
Right. Excellent. Thanks, sir. And what I would add is that, as we look at this, and as you all, as our city council considers what your priorities would be for us to explore, and I say the word "explore" on purpose because we still have to make sure that we are in compliance with the state and, and with the federal mandates and guidelines and the other agreements that we have in place. And so, I know that the EDC has a priority of number two, number three, and then number one. And as, as indicated by our Public Works, and I'm in agreement, I actually would say from our perspective is three, two, one. For the sake of many factors, to include impervious surface cover, our current amenities, and the disc golf, and all the other things that goes on there, no municipal reason to try to max out parking there. If we were to expand and add more parking in the very last phase overall, we do have in the master plan that's been designed, another section off of 1560 that could be something that could come in if it's appropriate to do in the season that we evaluated. I'm not trying to get into that portion of discussion. I'm just making a, a mental note as you evaluate the parking options. Again, we will be very diligent about any and all compliance factors. We'll be looking at the environmental factors, and then we'll be looking at usage. And the picture is not necessarily final design, it is essentially like having a, a site visited, what would that look like in, in essence? So, I, you?
Thank you, Henry. So, uh, this is a discussion, so I, I would like to probably start with Councilmember Kato and get his thoughts.
Isn't another option to do nothing and keep our current parking? Or is that not an option?
That is an option. I wouldn't call it a viable option because of the challenges that we already face with the ambiguity. It, it's actually not paved over there as far as like all this parking spots. We got the, what do you call them? The buttersticks? Official term? Not really. But we got blocks that people can pull up to. But again, it's so much ambiguity with, without painted lines or dedicated lines and lanes. It's a challenge at times, and we don't want to maintain that as a hazard. We want to actually clean that up as well as make sure that, that the challenges that we face when we go in there with our gear is mitigated, and we don't want to have to drive across the grass if we don't need to.
And the cost across these three options?
Uh, so, what the EDC has forecasted, because the EDC has quality of life funds that they have, that they voted for in their budget, is $500,000 if I, if I'm remembering that right. Am I remembering that correctly? I think, I think the answer is yes. Now, of course, we won't know final until it's actually designed, but that's the amount of funds that they have laid out.
That's a lot of money to gain nine spaces. Only gain nine spaces.
That's only nine spaces if it is appropriately and efficiently utilized currently. I understand.
Okay. I think, so... Can I, can I add something?
I don't. I'm not convinced that it's worth the money at this point.
And, and this is not in an effort to persuade you differently, uh, but one thing to consider is if, let's say, say for instance, there is an event going on at the park, or even not, and there's people parked, uh, a lot of people that park there for, for the use of the park. In its current form, emergency services would have a hard time getting EMS and fire in there. So, that's something that should be considered as well. With the, with the, with a like actual engineered, designed parking lot, we would mitigate that. They would have the turn radiuses and all the things that are in compliance with all that. So, I just thought that should be noted as well.
Thank you.
Now, I like the option three, two, one also. Two and one, kind of, they go into the frisbee course a little more and stuff. It's kind of taking the land and it's, the park's already small, but I like option three. And, you know, two just gives us, what? Two additional spaces and takes a little bit more land. So, my money's on three.
Uh, I was kind of on the fence between option two and three as being the priority, but hearing from Public Works, having some additional information, I'm definitely leaning towards three.
Yeah, me too. Thanks for the input, Cory. The one thing I would say, and it's, for me, it's hard to actually see that, and I'll have it up on my laptop. The, the, the one common improvement on all three of those designs is it appears they're gonna widen the actual entrance gate to where it's, it's, right now, it's one car in and one out through the entrance. They will widen it so you can have it in and out. You can kind of have cars coming in and out. And, and then the other issue is if you've looked at the driveway in, you've got utility poles like every 10 feet right in the middle, which, which dovetails with what Cory was talking about, but I don't know how fire safely could get a big engine through there. They could get one of the ambulances in there probably, that, that would be a concern. They would probably come through, uh, the 1560 cattle gate probably, right? Today. So, I mean, so it's still safe, they can get there, but they probably can't today, they couldn't safely get in through the normal driveway. So, and again, it's hard to see all that with that, but...
Is the amount of asphalt in three and one the same? Yet we're saying half a million dollars for either one? That's the question.
Well, I, I'm not necessarily saying that the cost is going to be the same across all designs. I'm saying that the budget that's been set aside is $500,000. Once we have design, we'll be closer to what that actually...
We don't know if any and all of these will fit the budget, will fit within the budget?
Well, according to the, the master plan, uh, team that put this together, I think that it actually reflected less than $400,000, if I remember right. Now, the thing is, until it gets engineered and until all the environmental pieces and parts, you know, we won't know that number exact. And I don't know, uh, how much surface and or asphalt is actually used in each one of the three. I don't think it's represented in the document that was submitted.
Yeah, that's a good question.
I mean, I, I like three, but I would like to see it bigger. So, I think it needs to accommodate, you know, maintenance vehicles, EMS, fire. And if we're already spending that much money, you know, what's a little bit more, maybe 10 more parking spots?
So...
I mean, you spend a little bit more upfront, but if you ever want to, you have room to grow, more room to grow. Nine spots is not much room.
And I think that's why Subrina and I initially, in, in our, at the other board that we sit on, we were thinking two, three because of that. And oh, by the way, this is phase one, there's like five or six phases, so there's other amenities that would be added to this over the next couple of years. So, everyone's going crazy over pickleball courts. That's in there. There's two, two courts planned, whether we get there or not. That's gonna bring a lot of traffic that's not there today, another playground area, a dog park. So, th- those are amenities that aren't in place, so, and you didn't have that information?
Yes, but you had mentioned it previously, so that's another good point. I think we need to be planning for the master plan, not the current plan.
Correct.
Which I don't think three is going to give us enough room to grow. I mean, I like the design and everything, and I, the reasons that Cory gave are great. I'd just like to see a modified three that had more parking spaces.
So, my takeaway from this conversation, correct me if I'm wrong, is I think we're kind of the way we were looking at it on the EDC board, too. Two and three are really the two contenders. The first one is just too big, and, and the park's not that big, so most of the park's gonna be parking spot and no room for amenity. So, so what's, what's the point? So, but I, I think, I think we kind of, I think we kind of are able to provide EDC the feedback, or at least the reassurance of the way they're looking at it is pretty similar, very similar. So, we're kind of in sync. And I think that was the whole point of having this discussion tonight, was to make sure we, because when we start to spend money, or when the EDC starts to spend money, they don't want to come here and then for us to be out in, in a totally different direction, So, Selena, do I need to bring Justin up to the podium?
We're sidebarring. He wanted me to bring up this phasing plan, since Councilmember Kato was asking about costs.
Can I see that?
No. I have to work on the laptop.
All right.
I, I know, so, yeah.
So, what I, what I'll say is, if you could turn it for me, I...
Let me zoom, try to zoom in on at least phase one.
Yeah. So, the parking lot improvements, as depicted, shows a subtotal of range of between, was that, 393 to 432, as far as the, the costs in the subtotal for high-low. Then you have additional general conditions and professional services that, that would bring that up from there. Overall, again, I, I really believe that, um, in their high-low range, you know, we'll be able to, to have a, an approach that would be within the budget, but not only within the budget, everything really just depends on the actual engineering, the actual materials. And right now, this is an estimate that we just received from, from Birding and Associates. And I, I can't, again, I can't tell you how much material, I can't tell you any of those
I think I heard the consensus is two and three are, are the options that need to be continued or pursued. And then, there's a lot of other coordination that has to be done with, you know, CPS, SAWs, TCEQ as well, so... But the whole intent of tonight, this particular agenda item, was to provide feedback back to the EDC. There's a lot of unknown, you know, unknown answers to, to questions like were brought up here tonight, but I think it's, it's easy to say, um, we're going to pursue two and three as we dig further into this, right? When I say "we," that's the Economic Development Corporation. Does that sound...
In conjunction with the city professional staff, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Can't do anything without Public Works. Okay. Unless anybody else has any comments, um, I think we'll, gonna go ahead and, gonna, gonna go ahead and close the city council regular meeting at my clock, 7:42. Where's my thing?